Lincoln Heights Council Meeting is now in session. Today's date is Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. The time is seven thirty. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Present.
Councilwoman Nuna Calhoun Mumia. No response. Councilman Doron Daniels.
Present.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Present.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter. No response. Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Present.
We have five who are present, two who are absent. We do have a quorum. And for the record, Mayor, I wanted to say that Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter is out due to illness.
I think we also got a request for approval for Calhoun Mumia as well. I thought I saw something come across.
She's on vacation. That's what you sent us.
I'm sorry?
She's on vacation? That's a vacation?
I misspoke about said vacation. I thought said illness. Oh, that's right.
And Councilwoman.
I apologize. So let me restate that for the record. Councilwoman Nuna Calhoun Mumia is out due to being on vacation. And Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter is out due to illness. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Linda Childs Jeter and Councilwoman Nuna Calhoun Mumia from tonight's meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion does pass.
The prayer will be given by Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the mercy, blessing, and grace that you have given us. Lord, we come to you this evening to transact business, to approve business for the Village of Lincoln Heights. Lord, we just ask that you be amongst us, guide our thoughts, guide our words, so that we are respectful and that we are doing what is necessary to move the village forward. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over those who are not here this evening. Lord, we hope that all of our words and all of our thoughts are acceptable in your sight. This we say in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Motion in order for the filing of the Journal for the Committee, the whole meeting minutes for October fourteenth and the regular council meeting minutes for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, both with any necessary corrections as needed.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, announcements. Councilman Daniels?
Just want to announce Friday is Harvest Fest. So once again, all those that have reached out to Ms. Sarita Brown, Friday is the day. Look forward to all the kiddos. And if you still want to come out and volunteer, want to set up a car or just want to volunteer in general, reach out to Ms. Sarita Brown. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Baber.
No announcements. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Key?
Just wanted to say to the residents that we recognize and we understand that this is some trying times for some of our residents with the government shutdown and with individuals who may have food insecurities. Please be on the lookout through social media and hopefully from other council members who are connected to food banks or food opportunities, that there are organizations that are banding together to try to help and support those who will be in need. We don't know what's going to happen, but strong indications are that November first is going to be difficult and challenging for some of our families. And so if you have an opportunity to support some of the local food banks that's happening through Valley Boosters, if you don't or you need additional support, please be on the lookout for those things. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the council members. I believe all of us are connected in some way to some additional food support for you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, no announcements, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Only announcement I have is I just want to congratulate Mount Mariah Baptist Church, who celebrated their one hundredth year anniversary this Saturday and Sunday. So we just want to give them heartfelt congratulations for them for being a member of one of our biggest, actually, mother churches in the Village of Lincoln Heights. So congratulations to them and their pastor Marvin for the vision, for him move his church forward. Thank you so much. And I just think we should applaud them for a hundred years. All right. Thank you. All right.
Permission to be excused for a moment, please?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we have our speaker, Mr. Wade Johnson, that will be coming. He is the AICP Executive Director of Tri-State Trails. So he'll be presenting us a PowerPoint presentation. And in your packet, everyone does have information regarding the feasibility study.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present to you this evening about the Mill Creek Triangle Trail Project. And thank you again for helping fund this project. We had twelve local governments participate in this planning process. And it was a very collaborative effort with the goals of trying to reconnect so many communities that right now are difficult to walk and bike between, in particular because of the highway system and the railroads. So if you're not familiar with Tri-State Trails, we're a nonprofit organization. We serve the greater Cincinnati area. And we work with local governments and community groups to help them advance trail projects, wherever they are in the stage of the trail development process, from planning to engineering design to funding, ultimately to construction and maintenance. And then we promote our trail system so that people use the trails and see the value of having trails in their community. So I've got a little bit of an overview, this will be pretty quick, about the Mill Creek Triangle Trail Project. So I'm going to walk you through at a real high level what we looked at for the whole study and then show you the preferred trail alignment that we came up with in Lincoln Heights. And we could talk through that. And then there should be a resolution of support for you all to either consider tonight or in the future about adopting or endorsing this plan, which will help all of the communities collectively pursue funding to implement it. So hopefully you all see the value in trails and bikeways. But at their core, they are connecting communities so that we are having vibrant neighborhoods where it's easy and safe to walk and bike to get where you need to go. And in doing so, it's promoting public health. It's promoting equity in our transportation network. It's promoting sustainability. It's helping attract and retain talent to the area and promote economic development. So we set out back in twenty twenty-three to conduct a feasibility study to link up a number of different trails and destinations in the Mill Creek Valley, in the central northern parts of Hamilton County. So the goal here is to create a connected network that is, for the most part, separated from the roadway so that it is safe and convenient and welcoming for folks, regardless of your age or ability level, to get out and ride a bike and go for a walk and be active and healthy in your own community. So we looked at a bunch of different trail alignments. I'll show you the connections where we're trying to link to in a minute on the next map. And then prepared cost estimates for a number of those alignments to help evaluate, ultimately reaching a preferred set of trail alignments. And in doing so, we did a bunch of public engagement, many community meetings, and had a really robust response to our survey to hear from the public. And ultimately, where we're going with this is we're working to position these projects to apply for federal and state funding to build these trails. So here's the list of all of our project partners. We had big support from Great Parks of Hamilton County and Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District and some really nice support from all of these communities or organizations that are represented here. And we're really thankful again that Lincoln Heights participated in this planning effort. So we've got a website for this website where you can dive into all the details. It's tristatetrails.org/millcreektriangle. It's got the whole feasibility study. We wrapped that up at the beginning of the year and then worked with all the communities to make all the fine tune adjustments throughout the summer. And now we're here today asking for endorsement of this plan. But the plan summarizes all the work we did as a part of it, cataloging existing conditions, conducting public engagement, vetting these trail routes, and ultimately recommending some of them. But it's important to note that, you know, if you see a line on this map that you don't love, the intent is not for this to be like a binding commitment to that route. The intent is to show vision for connectivity. And that will help all of the communities involved pursue funding to build it. So here is a map of the Triangle Trail. The whole idea here is to connect up from Cincinnati and the Crown thirty-four mile trail network around downtown through the Mill Creek Valley, connect to the fairgrounds through Arlington Heights, Lockland, and then it kind of spurs in two different directions. One going to the west and linking up to the West Fork Mill Creek Greenway, much of which is already built. So where we're focusing in Lincoln Heights is making a connection to that because you've got the trail on the other side of the railroad tracks and we want to connect your community into it. And then on the east side goes up Sharon Creek and links up to Sharon Woods. Then across the top, hopefully you see it's an inverted triangle. That's why we call it the Triangle Trail. But the whole idea was to connect Sharon Woods to Glenwood Gardens and Wynton Woods. And, you know, there's a handful of community parks along the way here. So we're trying to connect our communities, our households, to where people can safely walk and bike to get to these awesome amenities. So we broke it down into a bunch of different phases, a bunch of different focus areas. But I'm just going to focus on Lincoln Heights for this. So here is the West Fork Mill Creek Greenway. We had three main things we were looking at in this corridor. One of them was improving the crossing of Springfield Pike in Woodlawn to get into Glenwood Gardens. Another one was in Wyoming, looking at improving a section along what's called North Park to get that trail off the road. Currently, there's not a trail. And then finally, making that connection to Lincoln Heights. So when we started out on this, we did a site visit. I remember Councilmember Daniels was there, out there with us. We were walking in the railroad area, trying to see if we could make a connection through what we thought might be an underpass, looking at the maps. Turns out it's just a storm culvert. So we had to pivot and figure out how could we make a meaningful and safe connection to Lincoln Heights. So I'm really proud to report that Woodlawn, back in June, they applied for a grant through OKI and they got it in October, just last month, funding to build the trail along Marion that kind of sets up this connection to come down Wayne. So they're going to be building a wide sidewalk along Marion in the next couple of years. And that will connect you right into, you know, what's called the West Fork Mill Creek Greenway by the Woodlawn Community Center and the schools there. And then the rest of this trail design was as a shared use path from along Wayne, from Marion to Matthews, where the road is kind of narrow there. We wanted to create a separate space. And then where it widens out south of Matthews, we designed it as an on-road protected bike lane to try to narrow the roadway and hopefully slow cars down and be a cost effective way of getting infrastructure quickly. And then we did look at going all the way down through Lockland. Lockland was not ultimately supportive of having the trail through that industrial area closer to their business district. So we had to remove that from the plan. But we did make a good connection to the elementary school and really like the center of your community. So there's, you know, there's, again, this is a fluid document. This is the starting point. This is a vision. So the whole idea here is if you all are supportive of this, then there are a multitude of ways in which you could implement it so that it makes stronger communities, there's stronger connections in your community, aligns with your plan that you just did with Hamilton County Public Health. So yeah, that's the big idea. And here's kind of a zoomed in view of that, which explains what I just mentioned on the map. And let's see here. So the resolution of support, if it's before you tonight, it basically acknowledges that you all think that the Triangle Trail is a good idea and you hope to collaborate with your neighboring communities to implement it. And it's non-binding. There's no financial obligation. Just shows that, you know, you're a part of this network. And then the benefit to doing this is that if you ever go to apply for funding for a segment in here, you can say, we've endorsed this plan, get you a couple more points in the scoring process, and hopefully that'll help you get some funding. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through anything in more detail.
Okay. Councilman Daniels?
Wade, just a couple, couple of things real quick. On page twenty-nine, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, on the statement here, just for clarification. Ivorydale?
Yeah, that's down there in St. Bernard.
Okay, okay, okay. I was just curious.
Soap factor, yeah.
And then my main question was, just because you talked about how Woodlawn just applied for their grant to kind of expand their piece. If we choose to go forward on this and just there's a multitude of different plans, depending on what we choose and depending on the amount of resources we can muster, would we be able to have some, I guess, some say in as to which, at seven A, seven B, or seven C, we would go with, if that question makes sense?
Absolutely, yeah. So the implementation side of this is totally up to you. You know, we would argue that it's a good idea to connect to something that's already there. So if you know that funding is coming from Wyoming or from Woodlawn, you know, staging, funding to come in shortly behind it so that it's making a connection and extending that into your community. But, you know, if you wanted to start by the school, you know, there's value in doing that, too. And there's all kinds of grants that you can apply for. They're outlined in detail in the plan. And, you know, we're happy to support the village in navigating that process.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this information. We love the opportunity to connect with the trails in this way. My question kind of goes to after you've conducted some of your assessments and what have you, were you able to identify, just for Lincoln Heights, I know there's other communities that might have different, but just for Lincoln Heights, any opportunities where you see, like, here is an opportunity to do this because we've seen it done this way in another community and it would benefit what you are, or strengthen that connectivity for you? Do you have any recommendations or have you identified any recommendations within the spots that has been mapped out?
Yes, so the route that goes along Wayne and would tie into Woodlawn, you know, what I view as the benefit there is then it connects you into the trail network. And then you can ride from Glenwood Gardens all the way south to Wyoming to their business district, totally on a trail. So kind of building off of that is what I would say is like the immediate low hanging fruit. And another awesome connection that's coming, starting next year, I believe, is the construction of a trail between Glenwood Gardens and Wynton Woods. So by building that connection into the heart of the village, through that route on Marion, you're then tied into, I think it's thirteen miles of paved trail that's going through some of our most beautiful parks in Hamilton County. So, you know, that's what I view as one of the short term wins that you could pursue.
Madam, if I could?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, any more tangible?
Sure.
For instance?
Yes.
Your sidewalks here can be enlarged to match, you know, what the rider or the trail walker would see in other areas. Is there areas that there are no sidewalks and could benefit from sidewalks? I remember at one point in time, we were talking about doing a crosswalk or some modifications like across Wayne. Any recommendations like that, that you have already identified and that all we have to do is kind of sit at the table, look at it, and say, now, how do we implement these strategies?
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, on the northern end of the trail route along Wayne, there are no sidewalks. And then when you get a little farther south, sidewalks are present, but it's not, it's not consistent. You know, you want to make that connection. So, you know, the immediate thing that you need to do is, which we'd be happy to do with you, is look at how much width is in the right of way to identify. Can, can we fit something in with what we have now? Or do we need to talk with private property owners to see, you know, can we buy some frontage in order to fit a facility in that's going to make that connection?
Got it. Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Yep.
So Wade, I wanted to mention about when we would meet and look at the maps. And I know we had talked about how we could enhance Memorial Field and try to get that walking trail. Because, you know, we have the walking trail around it and how we could go, go through the school, maybe the back part of the Village of the Valley and connect over Wayne. Had they considered that or that would be looking for resources for that?
So we came up with a cost estimate for that, which is often the information you need to pursue a grant, right? So there's a ballpark in there of what it would take to build a trail there. And really, the next step is then to either do detailed engineering design on that or to apply for funding because it often takes a couple of years for that funding to come in and then begin the design process while you're waiting. So I think it really just boils down to like, where does the village view, you know, the highest priority and need? And then, you know, we could sit down with you and talk through specifics on where your resources might be best utilized to have the biggest impact.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Just want to find one, just on impact that Councilwoman Key was speaking of, jobs and potential contracting and just bidding process of some of these build outs. Just, just what would that process look like? And then just so, you know, we talk about two, three years from now, some of our residents can already at least start the process so they could potentially be in that, considering the bidding process. So just kind of what, what, where do you, where do you see some of these bids? Or how do you see some of these bids going for some of these contracted jobs?
Yeah, so typically, you know, each city has their own procurement process and which, which you guys had one, too, I assume, yeah. So, you know, I like the city of Cincinnati, they have a certain percentage of projects have to be bid to minority and women owned businesses. And I think that is a great policy to have for a lot of these communities. I, I don't know the specifics of every community along the route, but, you know, ultimately, they're putting these projects out to bid to, to build them. And, you know, I could tell you that some of the construction firms that end up getting a lot of these bids, they're always looking for workers, you know, so. But, you know, would love to see, you know, more communities around Lincoln Heights that are having a chance, or more businesses along, in Lincoln Heights that have a chance to get in on the bidding process.
Madam, just Wade, if you don't mind, just to make sure I'm clear if I'm hearing you correctly. So when it gets down to that point, you're saying that pretty much Lincoln Heights will be able to kind of use their own bidding process and choose who does this work in that manner, so.
Yeah, yeah. And, and maybe just to clarify, like, each of the trail segments in each community, the action step is for the community to then pursue funding to build it, right? There will be some sections where Great Parks is, is leading that because it's near a parks facility. And I think your community could request that Great Parks take on something like that. But at the end of the day, the, the short term action will be for a community to take their own, control of their own destiny.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing further, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you all and, and again, for participating in this plan.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right. So from that, we're going to the regular agenda. Communications to Council from the clerk account.
Madam, ma'am, I'm sorry. Can we make a motion in, I probably said this earlier and I apologize. Can we make a motion in our agenda to move item thirteen up before, I think we'll usually be up before number eight, after our speaker and have hearing from the residents after, first before we want to talk regular agenda? I believe that's how it is our regular calendar for our meetings. But if that's, but yeah, if it's not too late, I would like to make a motion that we move item, I'm sorry, not thirteen, item number fourteen. Sorry, item number fourteen, hearing from the residents up now and before we go regular agenda would be my motion.
All right. It's been moved in second to move number fourteen to, to before communications clerk, we can do that, okay. It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber?
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell?
Sure.
Mayor, Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree?
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion does pass.
All right. That leaves our first speaker, hearing from the residents is Ms. Kendra Long.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to the mayor, to the city council members, the staff. My name is Kendra Long. I'm the owner of Kingdom Mindet Youth Company and a taxpayer, taxpayer that deeply cares about Lincoln Heights and our children. I am here tonight because my application, my business application and license was submitted on June the twenty-fifth, yeah, June of two thousand twenty-five. The application was denied on June the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, but it's been pending for the last five months. I have stood before the city council, appeared, appeared in front of the city council, the city planning committee, and spoke directly with the new village manager. Despite the efforts, I still do not have a clear timeline for my license that should take a day to a week to approve. The delay of five months is highly unreasonable. And I want to be clear, I have to follow, I've been following the instructions. I've completed all the forms. I've paid an additional five hundred dollars fees to, for a special exempt permit. I've requested, if anything that I'm missing, I've responded to every email, phone call of my knowledge. There's, there's no reason. I can follow directions as a small business, but it's been extremely difficult because I've been paying for rent, missing out on opportunities, losing relationships with other consumers. And all I'm here tonight is to ask, when can I get a definite answer on my business license so I can move forward to make a impact in our community, in the community of Lincoln Heights? And just to be able to move forward because paying rent and losing employees because of the timeline, it's been five months, is really, really, really hurting my business. But tonight, if I can get some clear understanding on how to move forward, if I can get a written statement on the status, if anything I'm missing, I can address it immediately. The owner of the building that I'm renting, he's here tonight to speak on behalf or if anything that you need from him. I just want to know, can we move forward and get this license on the way? I've paid everything that I need to pay and I've done everything that I needed to do. And I would really love to open up my community center and efforts in the city of Lincoln Heights.
Okay. So Ms. Long, I'm not, I'm not sure about your conversation you had with the village manager, but I know I've been in conversation with the planning commission and that's actually where the delay is coming from. Because, Council, we cannot, our hands are tied until the planning commission decides to do the recommendation. I know you've brought all the documents that they've asked you for. I do know also that the planning commission does meet this upcoming Thursday. But in, in regard to them, there has to be to a public meeting that they would hold the day of if there's going to be a recommendation because you have, they have to, we have to inform the residents. After that takes place, then Council has to have a public hearing and they have, we have to decide whether or not that's where we want to move. I'm not sure, Mr. Brown, was there anything else that took place? Because I know regarding the denial from the tax administrator regarding the business license.
No, to my understanding, that is precisely the process by which a special exception will be. No, to my understanding, that is precisely, uh, the process by which, um, a special exception will be, um, moving forward, it has to be go through a recommendation through the planning commission. Just learned today that there's going to be a planning commission meeting on Thursday. So, um, and you mentioned that the owner of the property will, he is here currently with you.
Presenting tonight.
Excellent. So, um, I've seen your information as it pertains to the application for the special exception, uh, at the last planning commission. So I'm assuming we can possibly move to have that discussed at the upcoming planning commission meeting. Uh, so that way any formal recommendation could be, uh, forwarded to, uh, council.
But they will have to have a public hearing.
Another public hearing. Okay.
Yeah. They have to have that, um, because they have to be able to inform the residents what's going to be surrounding their, their homes.
Understood. And it's like a 30 day notice or something like that?
Two week, I believe. But I, I paid for that on, uh, two months ago.
Right.
So I was thinking that it would have been put out into the.
We, our hand, I'm just saying, our hands are tied until the planning commission makes that decision. Cause I know you got everything that they asked you to get additional information. Remember when I was at the meeting, I, I informed you that once they do that, then council us around the table will have to vet based on the information that you gave them. So they're going to have questions as well. Um, we do not want to turn down any business, but we do have to take in consideration that the planning commission, um, is the one that makes the, the recommendation. If they see that's what they want. So we're just, hopefully they can have the discussion Thursday and get you in a better place. Um, I will say that, um, after that, Mr. Brown could possibly send you a letter as well.
So you will. Am I able to come Thursday?
It's open to the public.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
At 6:30?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
It's 6:30, right?
Yes, ma'am. 6:30.
Yeah. Cause I know you've been in a lot of conversations with our clerk who's continued to inform me that they're waiting on the planning commission, um, which is volunteer. But I do know some of them work. So that may be the, the reason why they haven't been able to navigate to get to the, the plan their meetings for you. But, um, do you know for sure that they are planning to meet Thursday? Anything council wanted to say?
Yes, ma'am. Um, just, you said you had the conversation in June. So I wasn't able to just hear, just where are you located? Just can you give me some brief, uh, interview, uh, brief, not interview, but brief synopsis of just what is Kingdom Minded Youth? What, what's your mission statement? What do you, what do you guys looking to do?
Okay. Um, we are a, a community resource that helps out, uh, at risk youth. And we help them to get, um, acclimated to life, controlling their emotions, getting them prepared for job readiness, preparing them for the next step after they turn 18, get them ready for jobs and, or careers or college, depending on what their path is. But we're here to uplift the community and also not just, um, for Kingdom Minded, uh, youth. We're here to bring to the community, community, um, gift out, me, um, giveaways for book bags, for back to school, community turkeys for Thanksgiving, community toys for Christmas and festivals to bring the community together overall and give revenue back to the city as well. So it's not just for the kids, it's for the entire community.
And where was the location?
Um.
Three women.
Uh, nine seventy, uh, 9745 Mayham. Me, right here on the white building with the billboard on the top, one street over.
Ms. Long?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a residential program, right?
Yes.
It's a what?
Residential.
Program.
They'll live there.
Yes. Okay. Until they, um, graduate from the program.
Turns out.
Yes.
I have a, I have a question, um, because I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about, um, some of our past special exceptions that we've had. And I was wondering, cause I, I don't recall, have you, so the monies that you spent, have you began any renovations or you're waiting to do, to, to do that?
I'm waiting to do that, but the money that I'm spending is to rent out the building.
Okay.
You know, so that I can have my residential facility there. So.
Can you take pictures or something to show what? I think, I think you brought a blue.
I brought in a whole.
You brought a building, uh, a model?
A, a model building and a, um, uh, a photograph.
A schematic of how it's going to look. Okay.
How it's going to look and everything. Um, uh, you're more than welcome to come and take a tour. So you can see, um, what the project is going to, what the before and then the after as well. But it will be set up like a co-op type of, um, facility. Um, it will be very secure to the residents and secure to the neighborhood as well. Um, we plan to be in our own little area, um, in the building, of course, and provide excellent service, get these youths ready and, uh, ready for life. You know, teaching them a trade, um, teaching them responsibility, teach them, um, anger management. They're teaching them, you know, these are youth that their parents could have OD'd and they don't have nowhere else to go. They may be raised by a grandparent that cannot help them anymore or any further because of their, um, elderly age. Um, it's pretty much just giving back to kids that don't have no one else to advocate for them.
So, so the kids, I'm trying to think, was it 40? How many, how many kids that you expect?
Thirty-five to forty. Yes. Thirty-five to forty youth.
Okay.
And the staff was during the day, um, will have for forty youth, 20, 20 staff members full, full time and part time.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm, so I can share it with council. So the information that she did bring, I think it was because we asked about, they asked about the salaries and you included how much, I believe how much they, they paid.
Yes.
Um, so even though, um, since you've been waiting, I, I just think that even though, um, they're going to be meeting Thursday, it probably makes sense that we could share this information with council. Uh, that way they'll know, they'll be, um, and so we'll see about getting that information to them.
Right. And y'all have all the information, all the booklets. I've made probably over thirty booklets.
Yeah. Cause we normally get it after they do a recommendation, but at least they can, you know, they'll be able to see what they're saying and, um.
And our mission statement is, um, pouring love back into the community. One youth, one family, one community at a time.
Madam chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have another facility or is this a brand new facility for you?
Um, I've had, um, facilities in the past. Yes, ma'am.
They've been in the city?
No, it has been in different, uh, neighborhoods, well, different cities. I, and one was in Dayton. I had a group homes before the residential facility as well.
Do you mind giving us the names of those organizations?
Um.
Is it under the same name?
Well, it's not under the same name because it was sold. So I don't want to affiliate with what's going on with a business that I've already sold. But you can get a, a pilot, um, of what it looks like in my experience. But we have professional, um, teachers, counselors, psychiatrists, um, uh, registered nurses, uh, nurse practitioners. We have a whole professional staff that's ready to give all they can to the youth.
Madam chair, I have a question.
Their businesses different. So I don't want you to, I can give you the name, but if anything has happened after I've gone, then I don't want to be affiliated with a business. It's not conducting on my standards and my mission statement as well. But when you sell a business, people, you know, can, um, run the business however they see fit.
I would be happy to look at it based on when you were there in operation. I guess what I'm saying.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I'm quite sure things has been changed, but it's called Compassion Care Group. You can Google the, the information. That was in Dayton? Yes. Thank you.
Madam chair.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah. Ms. Long, could you remind us what, I mean, you, you mentioned security. And I think you did mention that tonight at the planning commission. What do you mean security for both us and, uh, your residents?
Well, y'all don't have to worry about no, um, children in, out in the community. Or you don't have to worry about, you know, um, there, the, our program is restricted where no one from outside the community, I mean, outside the program can just pop up or come into our facility. Cause that's not how it's ran. Or the, the, the youth can't just leave and come back or, you know, be outside of the facility unless they have a, an appointment or their caseworker is assisting them and things like that. So it's, it's very, you know, top of the line and secure.
Not, not from the floor. You can't, I'm sorry. Cause she's presenting. All right. Is there any other, anything else from the?
What time is that planning, um, commission meeting?
6:30.
It's not, that one isn't televised, right?
Correct. It's not.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. I know one of the residents wanted to ask a question, but I needed, oh, I, I can't, she asked the way. You had a question you wanted to ask?
Yeah. I was just wondering with the kids, um, attend the elementary school or would you?
No, they, we have a, um, everything is in-house, an in-house program. There'll be, uh, school tutor, everything in-house, job training, job readiness. They'll be going from school.
So they don't have school at the facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Until attending the elementary?
No.
That's what I was curious about.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone for hearing me out and I thank you. I'm, I'm not trying to be mean or anything. I just wanted some questions and thank you for answering them.
You're welcome.
Everybody have a great evening.
You too, Ms. Long.
Thank you. All right. Our next, uh, speaker or hearing from the resident is Ms. Karen Hinkston.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Karen Hinkston, address 932 Jackson Street. So on October the 10th, I, um, requested information. And we all know that information is public information. So alone, it was quite a bit of information. So I knew it was going to take a little bit of time. And I gave that even though that charter says it's three days, but I gave that time. But what I don't understand is when I asked for, because income, salaries, you don't give names, you don't give social security numbers, you don't give any of that. But if you have a department, if we asked them for financial information, we had to be transparent and I am able to get that because I am a resident. So the stuff that I asked for was income for each department, like a guideline. I'm going to give you an example. Say for instance, we got a supervisor maintenance. We got a assistant supervisor. We have four to three people that sits up under them. So if I asked for that information, it may be be a dialogue or something that you would send me that says supervisor salary of maintenance department, supervisor assistant of maintenance department, employee one, employee two, employee three, employee four, tax director, finance director. Every, everybody where our revenue is going out to because we are tax paying citizens and we are obligated to get that information. So me being patient and everything, on the 23rd, from the 10th to the 23rd, this is the last thing that they sent me. Now I'm going to pass this around because I want to know if you all can explain this to me? Because I don't know what these numbers is, um, position ID, and then it got annual salaries. To me, this was a piece of paper that you were just giving me something, just to give me something. I am very educated and I know what I asked for. And we all know that when we ask for, um, information, it is given properly. Even if you thought that you were giving me the right thing, I am not a finance director. I do not work in the village of Lincoln Heights. How am I supposed to know what 430960080 is? I have no clue what that is. So mayor, manager, could someone help me to understand what is, what do this mean? Would you guys like to see what they sent me? Cause I can't figure it out and I'm very educated and I play with numbers all day long. I think it's sad when we say that as a whole, the village doesn't have money or the village need money, but when you ask for certain things, it's, it's gay mediocre. That's when you hear the residents saying, we're not being transparent about every dollar and every dime that we get in and that we sent out. To me, that's unacceptable.
I'm waiting to see, I'm waiting to see it, then I'll respond. Cause I haven't seen it.
Where'd you get it from, Ms. Karen? Who gave it to you?
Um, Ms. Randolph sent it to me from Mr. Key. Mr. Key sent her that and she sent it to me. But from the 10th to the 23rd, it should have been a little bit more. Or you sent, if you knew that you was just sending me that little bit of information, you should could, you could have sent that out on the 11th or the 12th, the 14th, the 15th. That way I would have had time to respond and get it back in time for me.
Okay. Well, he's looking at that. For me, I wouldn't, cause I work with numbers too. And I would not know what that was. And, uh, I know in the past, when we've got records requests, it normally will list the department and the dollar amount. That's the first time I've seen that given out that way. I wouldn't be able to do anything with that. But I did want to give the opportunity for our clerk who got your several requests. So she could elaborate on that.
Thank you, mayor. What I got from Ms. Houston was Rickard? Hinkston, I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, Ms. Karen Hinkston was, um, financial information for the year 2024 and up to current 2025. And that was sent to her, um, before the last one you got. I had to email to remind finance and the village manager that I needed the information about your requests for salaries. And once I get that information, and basically I'm just the one that collects the information and then passes it, pass it out to the individuals who are requesting it. So, um, that was sent to me. I in turn sent it to you.
And I understand that and I know that you doesn't create the document. You just send a document. So I'm not saying it's no fault of yours. You just deliver what's given to you. And so my question is that, because I then sent another email that asking for what I want and what I, stating what I want and what I need. And so I sent that day before yesterday, I believe. So hopefully I can get the information that I need. And that's all I want to say. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So since the finance director works under the village manager, Mr. Brown, he will, he has that directive to make sure that you get that information.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. All right. So now we're back to. Did you get her response?
No, she asked me out in the hallway a little while ago. She didn't sign up. We were in the middle between the meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
So she didn't sign up.
I got, wait a minute, hold on. Hold on one minute. I gotta make a motion for council.
Okay.
Motion to council to, to allow Ms. Carter to speak.
Second. Oh, your motion, your motion, if you're motion, um, so move, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Doron Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five eye votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you. I'm Trina Carter, 9763 Mangum Drive. Um, I'll start with the good things. I have two announcements and also invitation. and also invitations. At Lincoln Heights Elementary School this Thursday evening is our literacy night, uh, which is a trunk or treat, just like last year. So, um, I believe you will be getting, Ms. Randolph, you might be getting a, um, digital invitation to that, but you all are welcome to come to that. Um, it's from five PM till six thirty PM. And again, it's based on literacy. So we will give out candy, but we're also giving out a lot of books and all of the activities are literacy based. And last year it was really great. All of the teachers decorated their, well, teachers worked together and decorated their cars to go with a specific book, their favorite books. So you all are invited to that. Um, and that is really, um, for our students. So parents and students already know about that one. The other thing which is new, we have not done in a while, since I've been in Princeton, we have not done it at Lincoln Heights. We are having a Veterans Day program on November tenth at two thirty PM that is open to all residents who are veterans. Uh, we will be, our, our show is called, our program is called, um, Heroes in Our Neighborhood. So, um, we would like to invite any veterans and of course, all of our council to that. Um, we will have some special presentations that I think you will really enjoy. Um, and of course, including our former mayor, Richard Haddon. Um, so that is again at two thirty. It should be about two thirty to about three fifteen. Next. Not the great stuff, but the stuff, I need, this is still gonna be quick. At the land use, uh, I'm sorry, at the planning commission meeting in August, they voted to, um, present you all with their recommendation with their, for the plan. Um, and I know that you all have not received that yet. So I'm just asking if there is a way that you can encourage them to give that to you because they said it at the end of August, that they were sending it to council. But I know that they have not done that yet and that is kinda holding some things up. So I know they're volunteers. I get it. But I still wanted to encourage that. Um, and again, I have asked for a breakdown for the tax levy. And I guess what I'm really asking for is the budget because the renewal, I kinda get. I, I understand that, not kinda, I understand that. But to ask for more money, but we really don't know exactly what it's for, um, gives me at least pause. And I've heard from many residents who are saying, what's this money even for? So I think it would be really, really great if we can get it out in the public as many places as possible. Um, why? We're asked, we're being asked to, um, vote for more money. So if we could get that as soon as possible, I know some people have already started early voting, but we still have a few more days.
So, so hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, so you're needing a, a budget?
I think that was, answer the questions, if we have a budget, but I was just asking, for example, for the, and I'm asking additional, not the renewal, but for the additional monies for police service. What exactly does that? What is that for? Um, I did find, but unfortunately I closed my Google tab and I have like thirty-seven of them open. But I did find another example of what I mean. Another municipality in Ohio broke it down and said, these additional funds will be to pay for this, for these salaries, for the maintenance of our trucks, for the cost of things like that. That would be very helpful, especially honestly, in this time we are in right now where everybody is feeling a little nervous about their money. It would be a good idea. Um, we do, from what I can tell, we need some money, right? We have to pay our bills. We are gonna pay our bills. But it would be nice for the average citizen to be able, their average resident to look at and say, oh, this is what that money is for. Got it.
So you were, when you made the request, was it in the planning commission?
It was not.
Did you send an email request?
I did not. So this is my first time officially asking for it.
Have to fill out the form, Ms. Carter.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll take care of it for you.
Uh, just put out there for residents. And somebody told me that it was on the website, but it's not.
She's gonna get you some information, my friend.
All right.
Okay.
That is all that I wanted.
You're welcome.
Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may take this time to say that, you know, we have had, um, and I know Ms. Carter has been there, but we have had, um, respect my block, where he, where we have attempted to give this information and we've had flyers or we've had, um, packets to give out that explain this information. Um, and then, um, I think in Mr. Brown's report that he's going to give, I'd like to elaborate on something that Ms. Carter has talked about. But we have attempted to do that with our respect my block. We've had them for the most part, um, since, since June, the first Tuesday of every month, um, except for one, that one, we, we did it the second one. But, um, so there has been, um, an attempt to put that information out there.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, and I'll be quick on that note, what I'm hearing from the residents is that even the attempts that we're making have not been good enough. And we've been hearing that for a multitude of years. And once again, whether it's our robo-call, not being working, expecting them to come to respect my block meetings. Um, if we're not innovative, if we're not, once again, trying to be flexible to work, to make sure that these residents know how they're going to be taxed, I think that is once again, a, a, um, it shows how much we respect our residents' resources, especially in a time like this. Um, I know that was even in some contentious and some conversations we were having almost a year and a half ago about the, um, communication plan when it comes to the levies. So, once again, I, I appreciate residents coming up here saying that we're not doing a good enough job. Um, and I think the response should be, and once again, this is just me, that we'll do better and not that they need to continue to come down here. We need to do a better job of going out there and, um, expressing what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Okay, we're gonna go, um, looking at the time. So we're just gonna go ahead and go into our regular agenda. The first would be communications, uh, to council from our clerk of council, Ms. Lisa Randolph.
Mayor, I don't have anything. I was gonna make the announcement, but, um, Councilman Daniels did speak on it about the Voices of the Village and that Jackson Street Farms Taste of Exit Thirteen, the trunk or treat. So I didn't wanna be repetitive, but that was my announcement.
You mind giving again just in case for the ones that are, were not here at that time?
Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Okay, it's Voices of the Village and Jackson Street Farms present Taste of Exit Thirteen. The Fall Harvest Festival, Friday, October thirty-first, from six PM until eight PM. Parking at eleven thirteen Adams Street. There'll be food, music, smores, hayrides, ten plus vendors, face painting, hot chocolate, pumpkin patch and pumpkin painting and much, much more. Um, it's their sixth annual event, trunk or treat, and it's free for everyone.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I don't have any communications. Uh, communications from our village manager, Gaines Brown the third.
Good evening, everyone. Um, last Friday, I shared my manager's, um, report. I know that that was certainly of interest to, uh, council, so I wanted to be sure to provide, uh, a written documentation to that effect. And I'll try my best to hit the highlights of this report so that way we are moving forward within the agenda because it is now eight thirty, so I wanna be mindful of everybody's time. Um, so since my appointment to the role of village manager, I've concentrated on fortifying the village's administrative core, restructuring intergovernmental relationships and implementing sustainable operational systems. The priorities during this period have centered on institutional stabilization, advancement of public infrastructure, enhancement of public safety mechanisms and adherence to fiscal accountability. This report is designed not only to inform council of present activities, but also to situate each initiative within a broader trajectory of municipal modernization, community resilience and long-term governance of efficacy. And so the, one of the first points I'll mention, uh, is intergovernmental and stakeholder engagement. Uh, in the first months of service, I've engaged in deliberate intergovernmental coordination with municipal leaders, uh, from Lachland, Woodlawn, Evendale, Forest Park in Wyoming. I've been able to meet with each of their respective managers and kinda get some understanding on the currently existing and historical context, uh, currently existing relationships and historical context associated with, um, our neighboring, um, communities. And this is also geared towards addressing shared infrastructure challenges, uh, like, um, plowing the snow on Wayne, uh, when it, when it happens. And, um, also public service delivery and, uh, regional economic development. Next is internal administration and personnel. I've met with several council members, um, that requested meetings ahead of specific committee meetings. Those have been very, uh, productive. Uh, these meetings have included discussions on the CRA, economic development, automated communication systems, website functionality, housing-related legal considerations. And, um, wanna make sure to also mention, uh, we are currently in the second round of interviews for the code enfor, uh, code enforcement slash co-compliance officer position. Um, I had two interview, I held two interviews on the week of, um, October twentieth and looking to move forward with, um, second interviews. The listing is, uh, currently on our website and the website for the Center for Local Government. Um, and this will also, uh, be turned to laps from the website on October thirty-first. So we will hopefully have a new co-compliance officer onboarded by, uh, the beginning of November. Alternatively, there is a, I, I finally created a job description for the zoning administrator. I've been looking for that within our archives and have not been able to locate that at this point in time. So I had to, uh, create one for myself. So that way we can begin, um, promoting, uh, that job listing as well because I understand that zoning and co-compliance are both, um, you know, worthy considerations for, um, our administrative operations. So I'll, I'll breeze through this. Um, currently working on a strategic agenda that will inform policies and procedures within administration for the village. Uh, have a plan to present this to council for review before the end of November, um, ahead, um, of the upcoming fiscal year, looking to create a, a master plan, a capital improvement plan and updates to the employee handbook. Will all, these will also be presented, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. There are a lot of instances of processes that have to be, uh, formalized and, um, currently working on policies and procedures associated with all of those things. The concession stand project, we are currently scheduled to meet, uh, for our pre-construction meeting on October thirty-first, I believe. Yes, on October thirty-first, gonna do the pre-construction meeting to assign contracts, um, get a definitive timeline for the construction schedule and, um, get all the information that we need in terms of what we need to have on like signage, uh, for any occupational hazards. The tentative end date of construction is January third, twenty twenty-six. And we are currently in communications with, um, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, uh, to get an extension to that effect. I'm just trying to think of high, like high level points so that way we can move forward in the interest of time. Um, website modernization, this is something that, uh, was not explicitly listed as a priority within my employee contract, but one that I saw was an opportunity for advancement. Um, the website as it exists currently requires a lot of, of work. And I have been communicating directly with Revise. Um, that, that is our, um, account that manages our website. And we have undergone an overhaul. Uh, the expected timeline for the completion of said overhaul was, uh, December first, twenty twenty, uh, two, twenty twenty-five. But, uh, last week I received an email stating that, um, the migration had already occurred. So like it, it, the new website does exist, but there needs to be some, like some specifications from, for our purposes on what needs to be included on there. Um, so I'm going to send, uh, an email to this effect requesting some, some media, some, uh, photos from previous events that have been held by, um, Lincoln Heights. So that way we can have that on our website as well as opposed to, uh, simple, uh, stock images. And a lot, a lot of details associated with that. Um, so I'll be, be sure to spell all of that out very plainly, uh, in the email. Um, next is public safety and risk management. Uh, building safety assessment was conducted by Deputy Kayla Crager, uh, in collaboration with the Crime Prevention Unit. Um, as you, you may not have seen, or you may not have been aware, there's been a lot of work happening within the building itself as it pertains to shoring up any deficiencies, uh, for our public safety. And, uh, the installation of a new intercom system, uh, began on October seventeenth. It'll be completed tomorrow on October twenty-eighth. This system includes interior call stations where, uh, my administrative assistant, Ms. Ramona Felder and, uh, clerk of council, Ms. Lisa Randolph, will be able to remotely answer the door, see who's coming in and out of the building. Um, and that's something that we, we believe is going to be, uh, a value added, uh, especially as it pertains to our safety within the building. Uh, these future phases will include, um, installation of, uh, security cameras where there are, um, you know, some, some lapses um, and some other formal processes, uh, in terms of, uh, plans and, and, um, blueprints for, uh, our safety. Related to, um, I'm gonna skip over fiscal and compliance operations because, um, that was, uh, discussed within the finance committee. But with respect to public works and seasonal preparedness, um, a resolution that will be going before you all tonight is associated with moving monies for, uh, winter preparedness. Uh, so we have reached out to Morton Salt to get an additional, uh, tonnage secured. I believe it's for like, I can't recall the specific number, so don't quote me on that. But, uh, it is to get an additional, I believe, eighty tons. So that way we will have, um, everything that we need in the event of any inclement weather. I understand that that was, um, you know, an issue, uh, in, in times past. But I want to make sure that we are being good stewards of what we have, uh, and, uh, making sure that the residents, uh, are safe, uh, going through the village. Um, lastly, for public works, the final brush removal for the year is scheduled for the first week of November from eight to twelve, that Wednesday. Uh, residents are reminded that Rumkey will collect leaves only if they're placed in those brown yard waste bags. And there are many other things that I could, could bring up, uh, and I'll make sure to, make certain to answer any questions that you all may have pertaining to anything that I may have glossed over, um, in the interest of time. But I wanted to make sure to, um, mention forward-looking strategy, uh, strategic priorities. That includes formalizing administrator pros, uh, procedures and communication protocols, executing the concession stand construction time, um, expanding digital equity through wifi infrastructure, advancing public safety enhancements, onboarding co-compliance and zoning administration personnel, posting RFPs for digital marketing consulting, digital governance and e-forms and legal services. These stra, these strategies are intended to fortify institutional capacity, elevate service delivery and to ensure the best and highest use of government funds through responsible stewardship. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am. Are we gonna do one at a time or do I just go through the few that I have?
Let's do one at a time so allow everyone that has a question, if you don't mind. You have one too. We got, I think we have three questions.
Oh, I'm so start.
What's your first question? Okay.
Mr. Brown, um, as I alluded to earlier, um, in terms of communication, um, you state that the, these strategies are intended to fortify institutional capacity, elevate service delivery. I wanna talk a little bit about the elevate service delivery because as Ms. Carter kinda indicated, no one knows about the levies, right? Um, and for two years, I want everybody to understand, for two years, I have been talking about robo-calls around this table. I have given at least three different companies or resources that could be tapped. And I believe that is one of the, um, one of the goals that we, we wanted you to work on. If we don't have robo-call, right now we have no way of communicating because everybody is not going to watch our I C R C T V dot com. You don't have to have cable. You can watch it on your computer, but people are not doing that. Residents do not come down here to find out the information. If they wanted to find out information, If they wanted to find out information about the tax levy, the Finance Committee is where they should come, not necessarily council, because it doesn't go into detail. So my question is, and then I know we've been working with R O K, who for a whole year, just about we have not had a newsletter. So I'm concerned that with Ms. Carter and Mr. Daniels, we are not communicating with our with our citizens at all. And those of you who've sat at this table for a year know that that's what I've been screaming about. We need to get our newsletter out. We don't have to go through R O K. We can do that ourselves. We've done it ourselves, individual council members. Staff have done the, you know, newsletter without it, doesn't have to be glossy, doesn't have to be six pages. But it does need to be something that communicates what we are doing. The robo call, we, I may have been hollering about it for two years, but we've been without it for three, if not more. And there is no other way that we can communicate other than what we tell individuals. And so residents do have to take it upon themselves as well um to find out the information. Um so my question to you is, where are we with the with the robo call, with the newsletter, so that we can communicate with our residents?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um and and I appreciate the 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 passion, especially as it pertains to uh communications with the residents. Um so I believe it was on, let me make sure I pull up the date, because I don't like to guess. Um let's see. On, let's see. On Friday, September twenty sixth, uh myself and uh our Public Works Director, um Chris Williams attended the Ninth Annual Hamilton County Partners in Preparedness Event. And this was an event that was put on by the Homeland Security for Hamilton County. And we've been in communications with their representatives because there is a Hamilton County Alert System that currently exists. And personally, I don't, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here, but I I certainly see an opportunity for advancement as it pertains to getting information out through like a a text, like a like a a push notification or something like that. Um so we've been in communications with the folks uh at Hamilton County, uh their uh Homeland Security. So that way we can get something that currently exists um and have that leverage within Lincoln Heights. But um I, and I recall having a conversation, mm, I ca- I can't recall who it was with, but I I think it may have been you, actually. There were many such cases of numbers that were on the the listserv for the robo call that were inactive.
That's gonna always happen with cell phones.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. And so like, I I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that this is something that we're working towards. Um haven't had the opportunity to meet with their staff just quite yet, but we will certainly move forward to make that a priority.
Well, with Hamilton County, that's an alert. Is that be the same to give four or five different things that's going on in the community, um the events that we're doing? Or is that like emergency?
Yeah, that's more so emergency work, but if if that is of interest in terms of like events and things like, events or anything that is emergent, like levies or anything like that, I'm not saying we're gonna have like a. For sure, yeah. I definitely think that's a, you know, a worthy consideration. You know, we we no longer under contract with a room of knowledge. Uh there, I've had several conversations with them specifically. And uh they shared very pointedly that in the contractual arrangement that existed, um I think either prior to like July or June of twenty twenty five, there was a a bit of a a challenge getting content from the village to actually push out.
I agree with that, but that's because if you only go on through one person, which you should, but we need to be notified. Because each committee chair could give some information, you know, so I mean, that's something that wherever that breakdown was, who was supposed to communicate that information, give us an um an uh a deadline as when to have that information, we weren't getting it. But I just want to know what, where we're going in the future and how soon.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 that's one of the men- things I mentioned within um my report as well. Um Mayor Mumfree and I met on Friday and we uh discussed the um the strategy for communications, especially digitally. Can't talk tonight. All right, especially digitally as it pertains to our our um our new website and our social media, because we're likely going to have to restart everything on social media uh and start fresh. Um because the way that the accounts have changed hands over the past, you know, five years even, um it's been kind of difficult to to post anything with it being untethered to anybody's personal information. And so um I'll be sharing an email to that effect. But the expected launch for the new website, new social media is on Thanksgiving, November twenty seventh. And we are actively working towards uh formalizing the process by which um our administrative assistant, Ms. Ramona Felder and Ms. uh Lisa Randolph, the clerk of council, will be able to uh work together until we get um a digital marketing consultant to help us with capacity.
Okay, telling, being able to tell the residents, hey, look at our Facebook page, hey, look at our website, because not everybody uses that media, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're we are using all, we are going to pursue all touchpoints. Of course, now we won't be able to, you know, have billboards along seventy-five. I mean, it would be great to do that, but um, no. But actually, like, you you like utilize social media to its fullest capacity, use the website to its fullest capacity, uh leverage any type of printed media like a brochure or a newsletter. We want to make sure we're we're doing all those things as well. I I will say that there are some things that are a little bit more urgent than a newsletter at this point in time, but um that is definitely a consideration that we're also exploring as well.
Ms. Key, Councilwoman Key.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I would speak to that, but I think we talked about that ad nauseam. My question is, under Internal Administration and Personnel, on pages two and three, it's listed that you had a meeting with Councilwoman Mitchell and Calhoun Munia, met with Mr. John Harris um to discuss the Valley Homes Urban Redevelopment Corporation, its board composition, and the history associated with the Villas of the Valley. I understand that. But again, on October twenty-third, you met with Councilwoman Mitchell, Mr. Harris, did to discuss Valley Homes Urban Redevelopment Corporation. This is, this is going to be a question to the mayor first, and it says, "The recommended objectives include ensuring current residents will not be displaced from their homes and pursuing legal counsel to review the financials and jurisdictional authority over the land." Was there a motion from council? Or or i- i- is that, and maybe I should start with you. Was that you receiving information from their legal counsel? Or was that a request for our legal counsel to propose that recommendation? Then it, then the part of that was, was there a motion from council to do that?
No, I was unaware of the meeting.
You were unaware of this meeting?
I found out after, because I came in after that, I guess, their meeting with me and Ms. Randolph and Ramona.
Gotcha. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so um this meeting was was held, um, well, there was a, there were a couple of meetings, but I think the one that you're you're speaking to most most pointedly is the one on October twenty-third. Um so it's my understanding that Mr. Mr. Harris grew up within the Villas of the Valley. Um there were some things that occurred within the years two thousand, between the years two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine as it pertains to the, there there's like two different acronyms that I've that have been kind of thrown out. It's the C I C. I believe it was the Community Improvement Corporation and the C U R C, which is the Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation. And just trying to get some information associated with that because it is my understanding that this property is uh scheduled to, at some point very soon, if it hasn't already passed, go into receivership. And so I wanted, I wanted to make sure to raise this uh to to council's attention because I want to make sure that this is something that has been, if it has been presented to council previously, um that I get some clarification on the connective tissue between council and the C I C or the C U R C. And if this is something that it falls within the purview of administration.
Gotcha. So Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong on this. The Villas of the Valley is their own entity. They have their own board. They operate using their own structures. And if I'm, if I, if I'm reading it correctly, and and I know Mr. Desai can speak to it too, if he's been requested to provide legal counsel for an organization that are their own organization. Are are, I want to make sure, I'm I'm, I'm not trying to say we're trying to do anything. I just want to make sure that I understand. Are we asking for our legal counsel to review these, this information regarding a private organization?
That's precisely what I was trying to get information on because um to my knowledge, there was a meeting that took place in either, anywhere between the years of two thousand eight and two thousand nine where um said uh Community Improvement Corporation or Community Urban Redevelopment Corporation through the Villas of the Valley was scheduled to present to council to be part of a partnership um to get some additional development dollars, so that way they can, you know, do some additional housing development within that property. However, um something to the effect of there was no quorum at that at that meeting. And so like, I I I see that this is a very tangled thread, so I wanted to at least raise it to the attention of council to review. Like, I I want to make sure that I'm doing things in the in the in the right way, um as especially if we're going to request that our legal counsel um sort through uh financials and jurisdictional authority over the land.
I don't know if that answered your question. Um I just wanted to to make sure that we were stating that our legal counsel or councils, this legal counsel does not have that jurisdiction to step into legal counsel for another jurisdiction on our, on our dime. Now, Mr. Desai is an attorney, and I'm not speaking for him, and he can do whatever, but it 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 reminded me of CMHA when there was a redevelopment there and individuals were potentially being displaced from their um their homes for whatever reason. Our legal counsel on on village, village funds does not step into that space and do what's called ensure or pursuing legal counsel to review financials and jurisdictions authority over the land. That's not, that's not our land. That's not our organization. That's not our. It has to be a what?
I'm asking him for the O R C, because some of the things that um Mr. Brown has said, it has nothing to do with the C I C. It is the Valley Homes Urban Redevelopment Corporation. And um if you recall, in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, something is supposed to happen as to do they, is the um, the loan, is all that settled? However, it's questionable how that Urban Redevelopment Corporation was established. Believe it's the O R C?
Yeah, I have it pulled up.
Okay. That states that they're supposed to come before our council, you know, to do that, just like the C I C did, just like the Lincoln Heights CDC supposedly did. I don't remember them coming before council to say they were going to start theirs, but the C I C did, and we were a part of that. And so, but what happens here, the O R, in this particular O R C, it says that when you're going to have an organization such as that, you are supposed to present that, you're supposed to come before council. And that does not appear like it happened that way. So um we do need to be aware and looking out as to see what does happen in twenty twenty-six. Um especially since it has changed to POA and not Model Group. So that's something that we need to be looking at to make sure that we protect um the residents up there. When you mentioned CMHA, those individuals only move so that they could do the renovation. And CMHA does that everywhere. They move them somewhere, maybe in that property, or somewhere else until their place is ready. So it's not about kicking them out or or evicting them. It's about um placing them elsewhere until their unit is done, until the whole um renovation is done. But as far as the um Valley Homes Urban Redevelopment Corporation, it bears looking into. We, so that we know what what may happen in the Valley Homes.
Well, Madam Mayor, um I do believe that there were some people who had to move out from CMHA. Um but I do agree with what you were saying. They were moving them around. But I guess I want to just make sure we have a new village manager who is new to these processes, who is new to how things work. And to have it in his report that it was recommended that he have legal counsel review the financials and jurisdictional authority over the land brought up some alarms for me. And I just want to make sure that uh the village manager knows that that would be, um you do have the purview to have the village or have the solicitor operate on your behalf or as it pertains to the things, the day-to-day of the village and what have you, what the charter allows you to do. Um but this one, the way it's written here, to me, doesn't doesn't meet that criteria. You'll have to come back through council or go through committee um to review the financials and jurisdiction over a a organization that is not ours. But I hear what you're saying, Ms. Mitchell. Um they are our residents. Um however, um are they asking for council's support in any of those things? I haven't heard, so, and I just was curious as to why those meetings were had. And I was curious as to, Mayor, if you were aware of them, maybe there was something that council had moved on previously, but I didn't see anything in my research. And so I just want to be clear that, especially for other organizations, that might come up and say, well, you did this for this organization. We want you to do the same thing for ours. We want you to untangle these things. You've used government funds to do that, you've used village funds to do that. We want you to do that here as well. Just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Thank you. I think Mr. Daniels had a question.
Oh, yeah, but it was taken, but um just to follow up, just to be clear, are there any council members on the um Valley Homes Urban Redevelopment Corporation or its board?
No, but I have met with them. They have asked me um to meet uh with them. Um they called me and asked a couple of questions. Um some years ago, myself, Carmen, and Tanya were asked to be a part of their advisory board.
And I declined.
I mean, I don't know because we really.
I explained to you that I declined. Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, but that was.
I mean, I was, because even there's some of the follow-up questions, as we get down to have two meetings to pertain to a site that was, again, we haven't talked to them about, you know, I just think, that's why I was curious if there was somebody over here that had, you know, some other information that wasn't put to the public knowledge. But if we're just trying to be, it sounds proactive, I guess.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Uh no, that's all. As I mentioned, I'll be sharing some emails to that effect of the uh website update, requesting some media. Uh so that way we can have the the launch as scheduled. And uh there's going to be some other things forthcoming, but uh for now, that is, that is all that I have.
Okay. Motion to accept the village manager's report.
So moved.
Second, oh, sorry.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Okay, we'll go straight into old business. I think this one, you just go read right to it. Okay, all right.
Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash eighty-four. Resolution of support for the Mill Creek Triangle Trail Feasibility Study.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moving second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kinsey Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes that motion passes.
Motion to receive for passage.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have six I-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive the emergency clause.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ton- Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes. That motion does pass.
All right, is there any new business? There is no new business. Motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five R ninety-one.
Motion here by title only.
Second.
Moved in second.
Give me one second, okay. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber. Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes. That motion does pass. Village of Lincoln Heights, Hamilton County, Ohio. Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash R dash ninety-one. Resolution authorizing the finance director to transfer monies between object codes within Program Six Two Zero of the Street Maintenance and Repair Re- Repair Fund.
There any questions?
Question? Is it, um, can we have, and I think you already addressed it in committee of the hall. And I, I keep forgetting that that's being recorded as well. So for the record, if you would just explain why this is, um, necessary.
Yeah, so this, this resolution was presented so that way, uh, we can, um, address any of the potential inclement weather for the, uh, winter season. Um, this, uh, resolution is moving monies from contract services into supplies and equipment uh, for street repair. This is specifically for additional tonnage for salt. And, uh, we needed to make sure that we had enough monies within, uh, supplies and materials and equipment. So that way, um, should, uh, we require some additional salt, we'll have that, uh, in our, um, in our shed as well.
Motion to suspend.
Moved in second.
Councilwoman Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to receive for passage.
Councilwoman Baber, you second. Councilwoman Phyllis Baber.
Yes.
Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes. That motion does pass.
Motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second.
Councilwoman Phyllis Ber- um, Baber.
Yes.
It's so late, I'm so sorry. Councilman Dorance Daniels.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tanya Key.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laverne Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Ruby Kenzie Mumfree.
Yes.
We have five I-votes. Motion passes.
All right, uh. Any miscellaneous business?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. Um, in regarding to Miss Tingston's public records request. So, if she didn't get all the information, does she have to ask for another request or we're going to correct whatever it was she didn't get?
I think she went ahead and sent, she went ahead and sent specifically what she was asking for. But normally, that's what should have happened from the get-go, and that, it didn't happen. So I think she mentioned that she sent a request again.
Oh, she had to fill out another public?
I think she sent the email.
Mayor, she sent an email today and, um, she wanted to request, just like she had stipulated when she was standing before us, i.e. she wants to find out the, um, Public Works Director salary. Employees' salary as opposed to those numbers that were given out.
Oh, instead of the, oh, okay, I understand.
Clerk of Council salary.
Put down the title of the position that we have and what that salary currently is.
Not their name or anything like that, but just for that position, this is what the salary is.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Lisa, uh, the Council Clerk, Ms. Lisa, quick question. Um, did you send, did you send that over to me today? Because I wanted to make sure that I'm addressing that, um, as well, because, um, I understand the frustration. I want to make sure that we're giving her the, the information that she's requesting.
I saw it today, but I didn't get a chance to send it to you today, because usually on Mondays.
Crazy day.
I'm cutting trees and putting documents together, but I did acknowledge, I spoke to her today.
Okay.
To let her know verbally, you know, that I got it, but I had not been able to move it to you yet. But I'll do that after this meeting, so you'll have it for the record.
We moved that pretty quickly, so I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I have one other thing on the, uh, public speaking. So, Ms. Long said she paid five hundred dollars for a special exception permit. Did, is that what she said?
That's what she said.
How do you pay for that if it hasn't been, um, granted? I don't understand.
I, I'm thinking, was it the business license that she applied for, that she paid?
She, she applied for the business license, but considering that the building itself isn't, um, zoned residential.
Right.
Um, it's commercial, it has to get a special exception for it to be used for that purpose that she desires. And so that is five hundred dollars.
But we haven't.
The application fee.
Oh, she put in application?
Yeah.
Oh.
I remember they do, it is that amount, yeah.
Okay, and if she doesn't get it, she get her money back? I mean, I'm just trying to understand that process. Why would you pay five hundred dollars and there's been no? I just didn't hear that mention at the, at the meeting, at the, uh, planning commission meeting. I didn't hear anything mentioned about it. Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, that, that just didn't make sense that the business license had gotten denied. I was trying to follow. The business license itself was denied by the tax administrator.
Right.
But yet, she submitted an application for a exception. On what business? Like, you can't submit an application for an exception on a building or do?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna have, that's okay. I'm gonna have, have Mr. Desai, um, elaborate on what happened.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I was contacted by Ms. Long, uh, probably a month ago after most of this had transpired. The story that was related to me was this, in June, she applied for a business license. Part of the business license process is to have it go through zoning to make sure that the type of business establishment they want to put in, that property is properly zoned. When Mr. Mercer, who was the zoning administrator at the time, reviewed the application and then looked at the zoning map, he determined that, as Mr. Brown has said, that property is zoned commercial. It does not allow for, as you heard Ms. Long state, to have residential services where people are living there. So, he did not sign off on the zoning piece of the application, which meant that Ms. Peterson then could not issue the business license. So she sent Ms. Long, if I'm going from memory here, but I believe it was back in June, a letter explaining that, um, she was being denied due to, due to zoning. Uh, Ms. Long then spoke to Mr. Mercer. Uh, Mr. Mercer explained to her that the issue was, again, as I just mentioned, you've got a zoning issue here. You want a residential use, but you went into a building and leased it before you checked on zoning. And the only way to get around this now is to either find another place where you are properly zoned for residential use or to come to council in the village and apply for a special exception permit, which basically would allow her to have a non-conforming use in that facility. Um, Mr. Brown and I then had a conversation with Ms. Long on the phone. Um, again, I'm going from memory here, but I want to say it was a month or so ago. And I went through all this with her to explain to her why she had been denied, what she needed to do. And I also told her, and this I put into an email to her, that Mr. Mercer me- uh, mentioned that once you get the zoning change, your hurdles are not over. You are going to have to reconfigure that commercial space so that it complies with the Ohio Building Code. And to do that, you are going to have to get a permit from the Hamilton County Building Department. And that is going to require a major redesign. I'm not sure if Ms. Long understands all this, but all of this was given to her. And that's how we got to the current situation. Happy to answer any further questions.
Is that it?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I do have one item, Ms. Lenny's business, and this last one, I promise it ain't long.
Okay.
But in our last council meeting, and I, I thought Ms. Mitchell was going to bring it up, because she spoke about it last council meeting as well, is, uh, former mayor Haddon requested that council motion to have the Sunday before Memorial Day recognized by the village as, is it Memorial Day, right, or is it Veterans Day? Memorial Day.
Day.
Memorial Day.
Memorial.
Um, as the day in which we recognize, um, Memorial Day for the village, um, for what he communicated. So I'd like to make a motion that council, um, deems the Sunday before Memorial Day as the day that we also recognize Memorial Day for the village of Lincoln Heights to be able to celebrate our veterans.
Yes.
So, just, just, just by the rules of council, um, Rule thirty-eight point one zero six says, any motion brought before council must be in writing. And it has to be referred to a committee for a report. So, if council does not want to follow thirty-eight point one oh six and do an oral motion tonight, then council will have to suspend thirty-eight point one zero six. And to, I'll take a quick peek, but I think to suspend the rule, all five of you would have to be in agreement. So just so you follow the proper process. Alternatively, I'm happy to draft a resolution and bring it back to the next meeting. So however council would like to handle it.
Will you give me that code again, please?
And just for the record, I want to make sure I hear you correctly, is I hear thirty-eight point one zero six. You're saying that if any council member chooses to make a, a motion to make a resolution, that it has to be, has to go through committee first, or has to be enough time to be presented in committee? I just want to make sure, I'll read it, but I just want to, when it.
I mean, simply put, it says that it has to be in writing and referred to committee for a report prior to adoption.
Thirty-eight point, thirty-eight one point?
Thirty-eight point one oh six.
One zero six.
Thank you.
But we have the option if we.
Yeah, choose it, yeah.
You can suspend the rule, and I need to look it up. But I think it takes five council members to suspend the rule. So if you want to do it by oral motion, you can, but you have to suspend the rule first. And if you would rather, I can draft a resolution and bring it to the next council meeting. So it's whatever council prefers.
Your pleasure.
And once again, sorry, just for a point of order, just for clarification, even though there's five council members here, you still need five members of council for the emergency meeting, I mean, for emergency clause passage or anything. Just suspend it?
So, Madam Chair, um, on that note, I think within the conversation, my question also included, are we doing, um, um, seed money towards it? Just like we do, um, Lincoln Heights Day, right? We had a resolution from Lincoln Heights Day, uh, that we'd always put twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget, and that's one of the questions I asked when, um, Mr. Haddon brought that up, that if we're going to do this, uh, we're going to say we're going to put X amount of money towards that event?
I think, um, I think we probably need to do that because I know, um, we usually get reimbursed if we get monies from the commission, Veterans Commission. So in case we don't, then we would have some seed money in there.
I would like to see, you know, Tanya Minz, the, um, or if we're going to, uh, just have Mr. Decide do the legislation, some kind of way we need to determine, you know, some kind of funds. Because, just because we say we have it.
Yeah. Well, I think that Mr., if I'm not mistaken, that, um, former mayor Haddon was, he came to us to ask us to set that day aside so that we can celebrate. I understand what you're saying, to be able to seed some funds into that program. And of course, nobody is going to say no to seeding funds. I, I believe we have two separate, um, items that we should consider. One of which I wanted to just make sure that we did the legislation or we voted on to have that on Monday so that he can properly move forward with that. We know that that is something that he is very passionate about. And we know that that day can get a lot of, like, there's a lot that goes on that day, and we want to recognize on that particular Sunday. And so, my suggestion would be to take it to Finance Committee. If Finance Committee wants to come back with a recommendation before council to, to do a seed, they can do that. But I think we need to do it in two, two steps. So whether Mr. Uh, Desai does the legislation for it, or we suspend the rules, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it and that we get both items done.
I, I like the idea of keeping thirty-eight point one oh six. I mean, it's no different than, um, the mayor or manager, and since we look like we have a consensus to have the legislation drawn up.
Okay. Based on the legislation, you can include both, just with that one legislation, right? That we're going to do it and that how much money is going to be?
The first piece would be the Sunday before officially recognizing that, and the second piece would be to fund it?
To add some seed money.
How much?
That's where she talked about.
I think we should, I think we should do it separately. I think we should have one identifying the date and one identifying the seed. Because anything could come up and we have one legislation that, that does both. We may decide that we want to fundraise for, we want to do whatever for the seed. I think we should have two separate ones. That's mine.
It doesn't matter to me which way we do it, but I'm just saying that, that if you're planning the day and if we don't get funds from Mr. Haddon and it's not in the budget, we run, we just need to put aside however we do it. We can bring that up, uh, I guess in the, uh, finance. But we just need to be thinking about it. If we say we're going to do something, we don't have any money to do it. We need to.
Just.
Be comprehensive with it.
Yes, sir.
Just for a point of order, I just want to make sure, because I'm reading thirty-eight point one zero six. It says almost as was bring a new subject, and once again, I don't think this was new, but I would say I might be arguing semantics on that end of it. And then to, um, Councilwoman Mitchell's point, um, you know, we can obviously fundraise around a specific item um, as well too, um, so on both fronts. I'm down for making this a, a, a piece, you know, honoring our, our former village, our, honoring our former mayor and his wishes on the best way possible, but if we don't need to, because it says a new subject before the village. Um, and I don't know if this is a new subject, but once again, I could be completely wrong as well too on that front, but I'm just looking at it. But, I, and once again, I, I'm just.
I, I have a question. So, so when we say fundraise, what do we mean? We don't fundraise for Lincoln Heights Day. So when we say fundraise for this, what, what, what?
I was just, I was just going off of the conversation.
We fundraise for Lincoln Heights Day.
I mean, we don't really fundraise for it.
Well, then we just fundraise for the Shakespeare in the Park?
For sponsorships?
I'm, I mean, if we want to raise money to have an event that Mr., uh, that our former marriages said, then we can have that as well too. That was not the, the purpose of fundraising or sponsorship. It would be the very same process that just went about our Shakespeare in the Park, where monies were realized and monies were utilized. But we were still curious about what that was going about. So we can either table this or continue to go down a whole different pathway. Because the main thing I believe was, are we going to honor our veterans, not who's going to pay for it?
Well, Mr. Daniels, as far as, um.
Councilman Daniels at the table.
I'm sorry, Councilman Daniels.
Thank you.
Shakespeare was, that's a grant.
I want to hear Councilman.
That was a grant.
Would it make sense, I mean, I think just because of the solemnness of the, um, of the subject matter to honor Lincoln Heights fallen in war, would it make sense to put it in writing so that if anybody
I will do that.
Wants to see it, they don't have to try and track down the minutes or track down a video?
All, all good. Either way, just as long as we get it done, I don't think that, uh, a matter of the, the monetary value of who, who pays for it, how we pay for it, I think we can be able to get that done. If we ever makes Shakespeare in the Park, if we ever make Shakespeare in the Park work, we can make this work as well too.
So I'll leave that piece out of it. I'll just do the resolution, setting aside the Sunday before, and I'll have that. and I'll have that to the clerk for, uh, council's next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous business?
Um, and, and once again, I promise I will be completely brief. I'll just submit a full report, I'll submit a full report and I will. So lastly, it was just on, as we said before, why con- why disorient conduct and menacing charges apply and the, and the case, um, case law that cites it. So obviously, both the 21 CP Solutions Independent Report and versus both, um, Hamilton County Prosecutor, both concede that the demonstrators, taunted black motorists and community members, they both stated that. However, they are stating that that was not enough to trigger this. Once again, I'm going off of United States versus Hoffman, 57 Ohio State, 2D 129, 1979, when it deals with free speech, directing at an individual in a manner likely to provoke violent response is not constitutionally protected. And under Chaplinsky versus New Hampshire, 315 US 568 in 1942, fighting words lose First Amendment protection. Armed men were shouting slurs and threatening passengers' safety in every, um, in every way. And they had five, um, different, um, pieces. So it was threatening of harm, challenging another to fight, reckless creating conditions, um, and presenting risk of physical harm. Both 21 CP Solutions and the prosecutor memo ignored that the target was not a counter protest, which they called Mr. Ruffin a counter protester. Mr. Ruffin was a business owner going through work and he was just pretty much being, uh, in, um, individually intimidated and that's not political speech. So just on that point along, but I want to say I'll, I'll submit a full report because I know it's 921, but I wanted to just put that for the record.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daniels. All right, there's nothing further, motion for adjournment.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night.